Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. Presentations for the control of the suite, our new agenda. Real quick, so the objective of the meeting is to review the updated spreadsheets and financial planning, the live change in the tax impact on the tournament. Scope of work in Highmont with upcoming board of rentment. And the board of ed to declare the lead agency. And that's really to the secret process. So I believe all you guys got updated spreadsheet. I have it all reviewed. So if there's any questions regarding the spreadsheets themselves. You could go through those. Just real quick, I'll open the agenda mine. So the first agenda item is to review updated spreadsheet. If you guys have any questions with that. Next, I'll hand the mic over to Dr. Thames for his financial impact. Is that better?
Yeah.
You didn't pull it out.
This is good. Thanks, Vince. And then re-review the schedule, we're still on track here. And then again, the board to declare for the lead agency. That's a good step, give them enough good questions and answers. So moving right along to the spreadsheet review. So this is basically a summary of everything. As per the last meeting, we revised the track and field number to review the synthetic turf piece of it and replacing the natural sound field. And that's because of the floodplain indications of that one. And then an additional minor that was added was the pedestrian bridge that goes from this campus crossing through to the lot board campus. Along with that would be a new athletic storage building at the lot board field. So we rounded off the total issued cost here. The total rental cost of $28,700,000. So at this point, does anybody have any specific questions about the minor items that have been updated on the spreadsheets?
All right.
Yes, all right.
We had a storage building. We were thinking about taking down the Third Street Storage Building and putting up some in this place. And I would really like to use your building as a building on the school campus. I know it's sweet to say this, but I think it's really very important to have a storage here. It's easier access and more convenient, better security. But it isn't just for the school district in general, but the theater department always needs storage. And we inevitably find things tucked away backstage that really don't belong there. So that's, I think they should be able to share some piece of that space on campus. And then of course athletics always is first thing to seem to be stored. So I would like the district to seriously consider finding a place for that storage here on campus. Rather than athletics. That was my first consideration. I wanted to find out also, I know some high school cafeteria, the split units are taken out of there. And are they going to be replaced in this project or are there not going to be any?
They've already been replaced. The unit ventilators that are along windows, they are all heating and cooling. They're chillants on the roof.
Is that possible? And my last concern, and again, it's not the air supply side, but according to the plans, the plan is to put the elementary library in that, well, we all know where. I don't have it to anywhere, but we all know there. And I just want to point out that I would be part of that kind of fine school district that has a library over the playground. I think it's going to be problematic for kids in the lot area to watch the kids in the playground. And it may sound silly, but in the long term, it really could be an ongoing issue. So I think if it seems like that is the most likely place where that library will go, then I think there has to be some consideration for the window placement in the library and also some sound people. Because I think otherwise the library will have a constant distraction on happening on its two kids in the library. I'm not sure the kids in the playground will be bothered, but I think the kids in the library might be. So when we design, I think we consider that. And I do have one more thing and then other people can take it over. Vince was talking about taking out the benches and the blankets in front of the high school or for him there. My suggestion would be to take that sooner rather than later to see if that brick also needs work and maybe together to be incorporated into this project also.
I agree 100% and that's the plan. I'm just recommending someone to do it.
And that's one of the items we're going to list for those special projects we talked about. So follow that, we plan to get that as well as being, so they're going to be quite there. That's what we would be considering. We're trying to do that out of this year's budget. Remember I said we were trying to come together and have it managed and organized.
Yes.
And actually, that would be, and that's definitely the benches, not only those benches, but we'll go up the benches in the back and the benches outside of the entrance into where the gyms are. That is one of the things to be minded on.
And I do have a question. In the process of designing like the libraries and all of the design and construction and unit issues itself, do you actually call in people directly involved, the teachers, the staff, administration, who will work in that space and ask them, is this just in input?
Yes, we do. So everything right now is very, we look very black. Yes, the strip bridges are allocated, but often we do not design in the vacuum. And we give our side of story, our expertise on design and functionality of different building systems and components, but you guys are going to have to live with all of that stuff. So it's a collective design process for sure.
So you do approach like the library and maybe they'll sit down with you and talk about your ideas, their ideas and things.
Oh, totally 100%. We do try to avoid any surprises on the final outcome of it is there.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, dear colleagues.
Anybody else?
So over at Lighthold, we're going to try to put a bridge in and we're going to have some storage over there. Do we already have the civilian? Are we, can we, or can we look at maybe doing some electric in without bathrooms?
Well, I didn't ask them about bathrooms. I did ask them to include electric in the storage facility, but I didn't ask them about the phone or sewage. I don't know, I don't think it would come across again. I don't know how, I don't know what, and how far we are if we just do one sewer over there.
Right there.
Yes, but I don't know what that means. I don't know.
Just wanting to know why we're putting this out there, if we want to be using that for fields and, you know.
Yeah, we have to hear that one cost.
Yeah. Dr. Thames?
You could use that probably as an alternate to the project if you wish. So that, let's say Vince come in favor of all, you could add that, but I must caution you that it would be a non-equal expense. It would be on the Christmas time totally whatever the cost paid plus fees. Just make do with it, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't consider it at the right time. So if Vince come in, if you make the decision, you don't need the metrics for the financing, let you know whether you think it's worth it or not, and you proceed forward.
Wayne?
In addition to this shared storage argument, I can watch this little. We had two parties that stayed down there and there's just not exactly what we thought.
We can take care of that in spring, how when you're doing some of these packages.
In addition, is it going to be a dip back, do you feel the back way to build that library? Is it far enough for the football field there or? Yeah, I don't think it would come across any better.
Why?
No, it would not come back to us.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, how soon, sorry.
Chris, if you would. Seeing something, we've decided to include the walkway here. I don't have any time to do that. Is it, is it planned for use of those people to continue the baseball field or some other to use in college?
The field and lightbulb are going to go? Soccer, baseball, I mean baseball and soccer.
That's, that's more than we need for the soccer.
Our soccer games are played there now. There was, are you talking about in Lighthold? Lighthold. So right now we have our soccer games there and we used to have our softball, softball field here that hasn't been used yet, but we're looking at that. I also want to say that the other point of the bridge or purpose of the bridge is not just for access to the sports fields, but it's also a degress in the case of an emergency. So if you think about our campus, right now we have one way in and one way out. So in the event, and we've had this situation where, you know, when we want to evacuate, let's say we can't evacuate off Aunt Yang, Bianca and Maple, we really would have to evacuate along the creek and 2209, which is pretty, you know, busy. And if you want it across, it's a problem. Here, if you have a bridge and you want to evacuate the campus to Lighthold and have ancillary services there or evacuation plan from that field, it would enhance our plans to evacuate.
Well, what would be the most needed to practice?
Those fields, I believe, are used to evacuate.
Yes, yes.
Do you have two soccer and two baseball?
One, one soccer.
Two soccer. Some boys both play over there.
And the corner side of it was the softball field.
My, my baseball plays over there also.
Correct.
So we're not creating a three little, but we're still going to go.
Now, because here's the soccer that gets played here is normally modified. And varsity is played or like modified, baseball is played over there where varsity is played here, towards the main hall for the rest.
In the event of, in the unlikely event of, you know, an active shooter or something, it is a lot more controlled. We should evacuate that way over that field. We can control that area a lot better because the buses coming out, it's more accountability, more accountability for students, more of the safer thing for us to do.
How come no approach to the walkways, President? Asking whether or not we can frame the field or any line of the field.
Just want to say the idea of the walkway to the lightbulb field is genius for the evacuation purposes. Secondly, does the varsity soccer team plan to propose a two at night? Do you see?
One, two, not every, not every. And there are, I will say, there's been a question brought up about who practices the player and how, and I've done that. So we'll be, we'll be that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go over to your next page, incidental maximum cost allowance. What we've done is we've provided the cost allowance up into the buildings as required by the state education regs, with the buildings we provide rather than their cost isolated out. So let's just use as one as a model and I think we can follow right through to the rest of it. So let's take one of the middle school, high school, five, twelve building renovation. And you can see that you've had your previous capital project of $14,425 million. And the amount of cost to that project that's allocated to that building is 6.5 million. And you've had another capital outlay project for $80,000. And then this proposed project in construction only, that would be $7,632,899. Everybody follow along? Now, if you notice the number underneath it, $31,127,690, that's the total eight ceiling for the building for construction purposes. In other words, you could do trillion dollars worth of work there and if it was all able, you're still only going to get $31 million and change in aid. So they have a maximum aid ceiling for building. The aid ceilings last for every project for five years. So at the end of five years, that $14 million project would fall off being deducted from the aid ceiling and reopen up some money. But in the meantime, for this project, your aid ceiling even after this project would be $16,907,349. So amp if you needed to do a subsequent project on the building. Now, what we call the lower line, the next part down, it's called site work and incidental expenses. So I think site work is all field work, anything outside I think from the building. So if you had a stair coming out of a building, it would be considered part of the building. But after that stair ends, everything else is cycle. Everything, no matter what you do, sidewalks, driveways, ridges, playgrounds, field work, anything, okay, tree planting, river, entertaining wall, all that is cycle. But there's also incidental expenses to every project. So there would be architects fees, construction manager fees, finance fees, borrowing fees, publication fees, bid document fees, there's fees for floor management, there'll be things that they'll have to do outside, you know, to protect against water being around during construction phase, all those are what they call incidental to the project. Air monitoring, things like this. So if you'll notice, the $14 million project really had about $1.355 million in cost of incidentals. The capital outlay was about $20,000. And this project for the middle school, high school is estimated at $9,011,662. But your total aid ceiling is 7.527, so you'll notice, you add those numbers up and it exceeds the 7.527 million by $2.858 million, which means you will then get the maximum aid from that they'll give you, but you will be short, you have to finance $2.858 million on your own. You take care of that in financial plan. In other words, what's going to happen is you will use up all the aid for incidental costs for middle school, high school. However, when that $14 million project comes off, five years after it was started, you will then regain $1.355 million back into the incidentals and it'll open those aid ceilings up for subsequent projects, okay? You've just got to wait for it to timeout, no projects to timeout, and then money comes back into the system. Now, if we move over to the elementary school, you see there's two parts there, an addition part and a renovation. I think our job as financial advisors to make sure that we're showing them the worst case scenario, whether it be the best, because everybody hopes for the best, but we're playing for the worst. Right now, you'll see the addition, the cost of the addition, there is no aid ceiling. Number is zero. That's because we have to apply to the state education department. But in our financial plan, we've assumed that we won't get any aid. So the numbers I'm going to give you after this slide will be the worst case scenario. If you get aid for any portion of that addition, the numbers would just be better for you, it would be less of a taxing. But to be fair to the public, we want to make sure that we're showing you that the maximum impacted aid, okay? So we have aid ceiling though for the renovation, if you notice, we've got some aid ceiling left. But again, you're using up all the aid ceiling over that all at the elementary school expenses. And a lot of it is cycle. So there's a lot of cycle in this whole plant. You noticed in the scope that was handed out by Chris from the architect's firm in Louisville, analysis, you'll see there's a ton of cycle in here and that's what you're using for money. Now, the two storage buildings, the one in church previously being demolished and then retrained and built or changed and altered, a new building. And then the athletic storage building, which is calling in athletic storage to now if you need a drink and a wine. By, by state regulation, either one of those buildings is eligible for any aid at all. And anything you put in through and attached through or company down there is not eligible for any aid at all, although they're district expense. So if you notice, there's the red right underneath. So what we've done is we've come up with a financial plan to take care of how much you're getting an aid for the areas you're getting aid, how much you're not getting aid for the areas you're not getting aid. And so we've come up with a debt service schedule. But before I get to that, are there any questions on this document?
No. I facetiously asked one of our last meetings, if we use those buildings for something like a phys ed program or something, would they then be able?
No, because they won't believe that you're going to use them for phys ed. They will come up and the phys ed stations you have, which you have enough, they will disqualify.
Wayne?
So athletic storage building, which I'm afraid we're up down that, for $213,000. That's incredible. Well, they'll be enough for $213,000.
Well, I, listen, I'm with you 100%. I've been through this about 40 times. The problem we have is you're going to have to pay prevailing wage, you're going to have to fit this down, you're going to pay prevailing wage, you're going to have to have bonding, insurance, you're going to have to have an architect seal on it, and you're just going to have to go through the regulations for the state education department. Now, having said all that, I'm with you, but that's what it costs.
At what price, so we have to go out for a bid?
$35,000.
So we can talk?
No, we won't, we have to go out for a bid. But you're going to build a building in school district property and it won't have state education department approval. If you're just going to have a project like a marathon building, you will not get it approved.
So if we're going to just put a shed, you're going to break woodwork for $10,000 or something between $35,000, have it over there, and put it down, right?
Actually, you're not supposed to do that because you need to place any building on school district property. Remember, this is public property, you must have, this is, you're a school system, so you have to pass SEB up. If you try that, if you fail, they'll make you tear it down and.
So for a 10 by 10, it should not have been a shed?
Any building, any building, it's a building, any structure. I wish I could tell you differently, honestly, God, I mean, I really do, but that's.
This isn't a 10 by 10 structure.
I understand that, this is a certain.
Right, well, by the way, it also has to be have annual fire inspection, right? And it's a whole bunch of.
There's more than just a shed and these storage.
Buildings that we just put up down in the football field and our storage facility building in the back, they commit $174,000. That was the actual cost for each of those buildings. So this, this number, I think is actually pretty accurate because that was, you can put that up in 2,000 and allow it. It's going to be 10 years later, that is going to blow up. So the escalation of costs is, that's probably pretty realistic.
So why aren't they booked?
I wish it was never.
Paying wages and what's, I mean, that's what there's a concern.
That, by the way, is not an unvalid criticism. Every place we do with one of these, every place they put these buildings up, they get the same questions, you're actually correct. It also seems like a little over the top and that is the idea.
Any other questions?
Okay, let's go to the next page. So the next page is actually a debt service schedule. I know there's a lot of numbers on it, let me see if I can read you through it. First of all, let's take a look at the titles going across, how's that start there? So we've got fiscal year ending, so that would be the June of that year, June 30th, 2020, first year, June 15th. Then we've got capital fund, you have $500,000 for capital fund, you are putting that money against the project. By the way, you will get aid on that capital fund money, so 65% of that money would come back to you. But notice the state is incentivized and you use some of your own money. Now, you've noticed we've got $28.7 million schedule here, but for the $500,000, we only have to borrow $28.2 million. So you would get aid for the $28.2 million. So what we do is start at the 2020 lines go across, so we have principal balance outstanding discussed that. We have an estimated principal payment, so there's no payment in 2020. The reason is because we're trying to ramp the project in, then we call it. In other words, you don't need to borrow all the money right off the bat, you don't have to borrow enough for the first year. So then we would have an estimated interest payment of $307,000. That $307,000 is really what we would call bottom anticipation. It would be for a single year, it has a low interest rate compared to the serial bond, only about two-thirds of the serial bond, so this saves the district money. Then we would have a total debt service interest plus principal of $307,800. And then gross loan per share would be $307,800. Go all the way over to the far right, the proposed tax rate impact would be 29 cents per thousand in that year. Get on board? So that would be approximately, say, $200,000 off of that. The next year, 2021, now it would actually probably be closer to a serial bond, where it would make a principal payment, which in other words, you're making a small principal payment, but interest on serial bond is higher because you're borrowing a full amount, $1.2 million, total debt service is $1.5 million. Estimated building aid, now the building aid would start flowing from the first part of the project completed, so you could get an offset from the state that'll pay for it, $291,000 and change. Your gross loan per share then drops to $1,278,840. All the way over to the right, it would now ramp into about a $1.20 impact on taxes, be another $120. So technically speaking, that should be the impact over time. If you go all the way down that bottom column, you see it's a $1.20, $119, at the bottom is an average of $1.19, should be about $120 on an average year. We're going to ramp into it slow. If you were to impact the whole thing at once, it would be about 5.13%, but you're only going to do it in two steps. It would be like 2.6 the first year, 2.6 more the second.
But the total tax impact is $120. So if we did that over two years, it could be 60 the first year, 60 the second.
Right now, obviously it depends on the exact amount that you do each year.
So I just want to, I just want to say this to the board also, this is all estimated, Dr. Thames, on today's equalization rate, today's assessed valuation, all those presumptions we're making or assumptions that we're making right.
Right, well, there's a bunch of them, so let's go through them. I think you're good to point out, first of all, it's based on your current tax warrants. You just issued notice, because we don't know where the equalization rate will go. So on average, this should still fall out. But if you notice the two bottom boxes, if you notice there's a box on the left-hand side at the bottom, says phase one and phase two, they're both December. Let's see, April, first phase is in May 2019, and January 2020. Then the first part went for the first one, it'd be 219, second phase 2020. The final cost report is because death regenerates the aid for the first phase, it would be December 2020, and then the next one, December 21. Then the next box over shows, yes, being billed, aid ratio of 70.1%. And then your bond percent is 76.6. So what's a bond percent? Bond percent is the portion of the project that is eligible for aid. Go back to the last page, all those things in red add up to about 24% of the total project. So they're not eligible. So basically, you would get 70% of 76.6% back in aid. And that's what those numbers calculate when you look down the estimated aid category about in the middle of the page. And you do have this capital, which is cash for $5,000. So on average, $100,000, also the box over there, right, about $119.31 on average for the time, but we'll ramp into it. So it'll be about 60 bucks the first year, 60 bucks the second. Now, it obviously should depend on if it's an even split perfectly, basically to bid and so on, but it's pretty complicated.
So I just want to make one other comment because I've been thinking about this a lot those accounts. So someone might ask, well, why would we do all of this, you know, specifically? Remember, when we planned out the project that was just completed now, it took quite a few years to get there. And when we went out to bid, because of the escalating costs, we were two and a half, $3 million behind the deal. So it's important to point out, Dr. Thames and I spoke about this yesterday, costs escalate every year. So the work that we have identified, the farther out from the start, the more it could cost, also we could do less in the long period. I think it's important for you.
You're absolutely correct. First of all, the cost of monies are in the estimate, I don't think the Federal Reserve costs the monies as. And of course, we're all worrying about tariffs and things like this that we don't know where they're. I think Lou and Chris, the architect and CM, have tried to put escalations in there to cover any anticipated cost, but the fuck, but they've only done it for this period of time. We go on another year past, this cost must be even greater, and that's a real concern. Building tools, it takes a while to get these things through, the state education firm approval process, going out to bid and all the rest of it. So time is of the essence, you do now. Any other questions? All right, let's take a look at the last page. What Chris has done, basically taken the sheet that I gave you prior, Highmont, right? And one of the things I guess we have to address today is the secret resolution, because we have to get that started. That's an entire process of itself, it has to be completed. In other words, you have to pass a resolution, because that's a condition yourself, is when names, you can start this process. And it must be done before any resolution can occur following to the public vote. So it would have to occur beforehand, that's what I think Chris says, that's a pretty good hope. But then your board of referendum is all set for the 12th of December. I think we've got publications and we're going to publish the things in the newspaper.
The 12th, I thought we were going on.
No, 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 later than the 12th.
Okay, no later than, because we're.
You can do it, you can do it right the second.
We're not doing it this.
Yeah, I see what I mean. No later than that, but remember, you've got to get those publication dates right because the vote is on fourth right now, because we have a publication date. For your approval, if it's earlier, you see, I think it is number nine, really where you've got your date, you get the publication in in time, item number nine, October 10th, you need the publication date. The problem with having a publication date for every school district is terrible, it's no more than, it's between 45 and 49. The problem with having a publication date for every school district is there are, well, it's, it's no more than, uh, it's between forty-five and forty-nine days. So if you publish early, like sixty days ahead of time, you won't meet the regulations, because you're trying to be early, you got to do them in, it's very specific. That's why we gave you the publication dates, all right? Any questions? Yes? Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry. Here we go. It'd be nice if you were to raise your hand up.
Now, if you had a copy of that, uh, resolution, you might add it.
We have, it's been uploaded to their...
So are you, you're ready then for the secret, I take it, and proposition?
We have the secret.
Okay, and the proposition will be no later than October ninth?
Hopefully be, I think that's the...
October ninth, perfect, good. Just wanted to make sure I'm not gonna get torn in your end now. All right.
You better not.
I'm an ex-supervisor, I don't even have a... While you're, while you're down here, I'm gonna ask, of course, if they're interested in moving, uh, the resolution up on the agenda, uh, under nine point one, twenty-one, going to make a motion to amend the agenda to move it. So moving second, if you move the resolution, uh, not the agenda, move the resolution. Is there any discussion, all right?
We're moving along, the later session, come out.
Yeah, we're moving to that, put it on the table. It's nine point one. Uh, is there any further discussions or movements? If not, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of moving? Opposed, no one? Now, now we can take a motion to approve nine point one. Good move.
But a nice question to start with, is there an I T N C nine point one, is that the seeker?
That's the seeker, thank you. Ron, raise all things, or I need you to give all things. Motion was made by two discounts, second by Irish people, to approve the seeker, uh, motion is, uh, red on the, uh, in the entirety. Is there any discussion on the seeker? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion fair. Mr. Young, for full scene, uh...
Thank you very much.
Can I ask one more question? Before you leave? So this project is really extensive, and it's gonna really touch just, just about every part of the building, and we wanna get it done in a two-year timeframe. So can you talk to us a little bit about how all of this is gonna get done in a two-year timeframe? Especially because in the summer, we have summer school for the high school and the elementary and the after camp. So that's on the concern line.
That's a great question. Um, what we can do is, and what we will do is break this project up into phases, and Lou's help, and Lou needs to have a great pulse on, on how to, you know, break up any project, and see if there's different types of kids, and if there's different types of contacts. So for example, um, we may take a portion of this project and get them, do the design documents, and see if it's safe as soon as possible, for a quick review, so it's in the architectural elements, uh, the pajamas. They have a quick review of that, the State Education Department, so we can get those in the queue early on, and it's a phase one, and start chipping away, and after we'll draw, uh, you know, scope a work list to, to get things, uh, to get things moving and to start construction next summer, basically, so.
So you...
So it's a phased process with, with Lou's help and...
Can I just help clarify, as having done a million of these?
Yeah.
What they'll do is they'll be working with Lisa and Vince, the principals, to take a look at screen space, what portions of the building should be occupied, not occupied, what moves to do first, what, what rooms and corridors to work in, so that actually they can move things around, so that you can plan ahead, so as to minimize any disruptions for the day. So it's a whole plethora of things that they have, they will organize, but it has to all be done in concert with school fishing.
Right.
Thank you. And the other thing I wanted to say about the, the passing of this, and, uh, the, the district moving forward with this project, while it is certainly all encompassing, and certainly, uh, you know, we see the numbers that are out there, um, we have to, uh, take into consideration that it's now time to, uh, we have been very fiscally responsible board for a number of years. We've kept the, uh, at sometimes at zero percent, uh, but always below the two percent tax cap this board has done, and it's done a wonderful job with its administration officials, and, and certainly Vince, and Angela, and Lisa, and, and everybody, and all the principals keeping the numbers down. Uh, that being said, there are, it, it's like anything else, you have to reinvest to, to maintain your property, and also, unfortunately, in these times, um, that we go out there, it, look, just this week alone, there were three shootings, three active shooters, uh, throughout the United States, uh, in just one week. Um, most recently, in, you know, in a warehouse where a couple of people were killed. Uh, but that being said, uh, these are necessary security, these are not something that we're doing just to go out and say, oh, let's put a pool in our front yard. Uh, no, that's what, not what we're doing. What we're doing is building for necessity. We're not building for pleasure, we're not building for luxury. We'll, but we're, we are building, uh, fiscally responsible for necessity. And the necessity is, in this day and age, is for security and safety of our students, and for our staff members, and for the residents of this community, when they venture onto these school grounds. We want to be able to assure our parents and our community that your children, we take very seriously the job of keeping them safe, and keeping the mem, the members of this, uh, staff, and, and certainly members of the administration, and, and all who attend this school, uh, safe. That being said, there's a cost associated with that. Uh, we have looked at for a long time, the, the security measures that will be taken, um, with the enhanced, um, projects that are gonna take place in, in all three buildings, putting in, uh, you know, new, new, uh, new vestibules, and, and new security measures, uh, throughout those buildings, um, and they come with a price tag. But the old, but the, the thing we have to look at is what price glory? How do we, you know, put a price tag on the safety of our children? We can't. There is no, there is no price that we can put on the safety of our children. We have to do everything within our powers as a district and as a board of education to ensure that we have taken every possible, renewable step, and expended every resource that we have at our disposal to ensure that the safety of our children is paramount to the mission of this district. And we will continue to do so. Uh, that is, uh, where, where we stand. We are, um, committed to keep our children safe, and we are committed to improve and reinvest in our district. Uh, we want, uh, everyone to be proud of this district, uh, we wanna have a, a feeling of, of pride, and, and certainly, uh, happiness when we come to this district, and also, we wanna have that ultimate feeling of, I can let my kid go to that school, and I can be assured, to the best possible way, that that child will be safe. We can't ensure it and guarantee it one hundred and ten percent, but we can make sure that we take every step to try to make sure that that child goes home at the end of the day. Anybody else wanna be heard?
I just wanna make a comment about the phasing. Um, we spoke about the phasing already, and we are go, if the referendum is successful, we plan to, um, do work over three summers, hopefully. We can get the roofing work done this upcoming summer, and then a majority of the other work done the two following summers. So we're, we're well into those discussions. I think the most important thing now is to get the information compiled together and out to the public. So we were started working with Holly Brooker, C P L, uh, the Plumbwell Group, and Dr. Tims. We have a meeting on Monday to try to make those big poster boards up, before, before pictures, kind of like we did for the, um, for the last referendum. Put some information on the website, maybe a couple of videos, um, but we'll be out there for the months of October, November, speaking to community groups, Noonday Club, anybody that wants a presentation, we can do that. Um, P T O, um, back to school nights, uh, open houses, uh, parent teacher conferences. So we're getting our, um, our informational sessions lined up in the next week. And I know C P L, Clark Patterson Lee, is working on getting all of the, um, the necessary sign-offs for the seeker. Uh, we should be good to go by October ninth, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And so the district can be assured, you will be working side by side with our construction manager throughout the remainder of this project, is that correct? That is correct. Thank you. Anybody else have any, uh, did you wanna ask your question, Don? All right, anybody else have anything for the, uh, construction? If not, uh, if there's a need to go in executive session, I'll entertain the motion.
Go back to executive session.
Second. For the purposes of...
Uh, specific personnel.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor? We stay on adjourned, we will reconvene at seven thirty. Motion carries unanimous. Public forum, anybody here to see the board this evening?
No.
Nope, okay, we will go on. We then have a presentation scheduled from the New York State Correction Officers, Officer Roddy and Officer Swatlin.
They're not here.
They are not here, um, and I'm not sure why they're not here.
So then we'll, uh, we'll table their presentation.
Yeah, we could, I can try to reach out to them tomorrow and find out what happened, and maybe have them come on the ninth.
Okay, so be it. No one will move right along. Board reports, uh, I have nothing this evening. Board membership? Wayne?
Just briefly, um, spoke with the superintendent about it earlier. It's come to my attention that the, um, the soccer team that goes over to Lightfold Field for practices, the bus is not here on time. Um, just wanna make sure we're gonna call, um, the bus company tomorrow, make sure going forward that bus is here on time, pick those students up, and, and back at Lightfold, to pick those students up, to make sure that the kids are back here to get their stuff, and get, um, get home on time. We pay the bus company, um, and if that bus is in the transportation, then, um, they need to be here on time. So I would like to see going forward, um, a call in, and I want that bus here on time, it's, it's, the kids are getting shortchanged, by, by a, by a lot, it's not by a few minutes, it's by a lot.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it tomorrow and make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna be heard this evening? Willie?
Mr. President, it's come to my attention, um, vice, from some community members, uh, concern regarding the crosswalk at the, uh, out in front of the, uh, business office across Maple Avenue. I'd like to understand, um, or I'd like to, I'd like to find out whether or not it's possible to have some sort of cross-guidance, um, for the, uh, in-school, I don't know what the terminology is, for, what's the, what's the opposite of dismissal?
Arrival.
Arrival.
Thank you. For the arrival session for elementary and middle school, and the dismissal session of elementary and middle school.
For arrival, one, I know one of my officers is there at arrival for elementary, uh, we do not do for high school, and, uh...
Conducting, conducting crossing?
Yes, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, one of the officers is there.
And this is on Maple?
On Maple.
Yep.
I'd like to look at dismissal.
We'll take a look at that.
An arrangement that can be made with the local police department.
I'll, I'll speak with the superintendent.
I think we know the chief.
I'll speak with him too.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right, we will then move on to our student representative, Sanji, Sanjita Rahaman.
Okay, thank you. Um, today, um, I'm just gonna briefly go over the varsity sport records currently, so varsity volleyball currently one to one, varsity boys golf currently one to five, varsity girls tennis, zero five, varsity boys cross-county dual-mate record, one to. Varsity field hockey currently four to three, varsity boys soccer currently six to one, varsity girls soccer two to two, and varsity football currently zero four. Um, I was speaking to Mr. Moyer today, and he mentioned that there are some teams that are doing very well, and others that are improving, so that's good. Um, the current fundraisers that are going on, our sophomores are selling cherry dales, juniors are selling mums, um, also, juniors are also selling blue devil, devil hoodies and long-sleeve shirts at the football games. Uh, seniors are selling Little Caesars, and the band is selling Yankee candles. Um, the past and upcoming activities are, all the classes at the beginning of the year had an assembly to review expectations. Uh, freshman sophomore day took place, uh, sophomores took the win. Spirit Week is coming up, and the themes include some new and some old, so Monday is class colors, Tuesday is crazy hat slash hair, uh, Wednesday is meme day, Thursday is twin day, and Friday is school colors, blue and yellow day. Um, picture day took place today, um, and will be taking place tomorrow for all sports teams. Uh, the blood drive is also tomorrow, hosted by the sad club and Mrs. Mead, the health teacher. Uh, homecoming week starts, starts October first, and the pep rally and the dance will be Friday the fifth. Uh, the Hall of Fame inauguration and football homecoming game is the sixth. So seniors voted on prom location, and that will be at Sullivan Rock Hill. That's all for today.
Thank you for that informative, uh, presentation, Sanji. Uh, we look forward to having you at most, at the rest of our meetings for the rest of the year. Thank you. Uh, John, could you, uh, just piggyback off that for the Hall of Fame, so the public can, uh, we can...
Uh, yes, sir, we've, uh, gotten, um, contact with everybody that's being inducted, and their, or representatives are showing up. Uh, we have a guest speaker to induct each person that the inductee chose of, uh, of their free will. Uh, we've contacted, uh, everybody via, uh, letter that we will be holding a breakfast, uh, the morning of the induction, at the Aroma Time Bistro, for the inductees and the honored guests. Um, and, uh, just been receiving calls and messages from everyone thanking us and the board, and, and the, the school district for putting this on, and, uh, I think it's gonna be a dynamite event. I'm working with Mr. Moyer on, uh, making sure that we have loudspeakers and music and things like that available for the, uh, day of the event. So everything's going, uh, very well. I, I just, um, blew a good part of our budget on ordering the plaques that will go in the school, and the plaques that the inductees will get, uh, and of course, the breakfast, so everything's going very well.
Thank you very much. I hope, uh, we, we hope to see as many people as we can at that event. Iris?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, uh, John, uh, what time will the actual presentations be going on? Do we, do you have a time?
So the football game is at two o'clock, and we didn't wanna interfere with their warmups, so Mr. Moyer and I talked about it, and we're starting the presentation, the ceremony at noon. Um, the breakfast goes from nine thirty to, uh, eleven, so that'll give everybody a half hour to get over to the track and, uh, football field, and get lined up and go in order. Um, and, uh, we haven't set that totally up, we just know that the softball team is going first, because Coach Lewin has to get out of town for a wedding. Uh, other than that, we're just gonna go right down the line, and the, a whole ceremony should take about an hour or less.
So it's noon at the high school, at the school track in the back?
Yes.
Very good, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now go to Superintendent, uh, Wild.
Um, I, I do not have anything this evening, other than I was asked to, um, share that, uh, there is an annual banquet that's coming up for the N double A C P. And the honorees this year are Mrs. Jetter, uh, Joe Logan from the school, and Pam Stocking from the Elville Public Library. So, um, they'll be honored, um, coming up here on October twenty-seventh. I was at a conference, and I'll have a report for you at the next board meeting on that.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Napoli.
So the questions that were asked of me last week, I've, um, outlined them in my report. There, there is one topic, I don't know if anyone has heard about. Um, we had some trouble with, um, emptying the porta-potties at the football field, the fields have been very wet, so we actually had to move them today with the Kubota, so the guys could, so the contractor could empty it, so I got some calls that they smelled. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Deputy Superintendent Miss Angelie, Angela Urbina Medina is not present, uh, we will go on to, there's no other one, we'll go on to personnel, personnel resolutions for this evening. Under six point one, upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, be resolved that Magdalia Carpenter be appointed substitute teacher at a rate of eighty-two dollars per day work, substitute clerical rate of ninety-four, ninety-five dollars per day work, and substitute cafeteria monitor at a rate of eleven dollars fifty cents per hour work for the eighteen-nineteen school year. So move.
Second.
The seconded discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point two, registered nurse, upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, be it resolved that Barbara Cobar be appointed as a registered nurse, assigned to accompany student number two-seven-one-zero-seven on a school bus to and from, not to exceed two and a half hours, five days per week, at a rate of thirty-seven seventy-three per hour work for the eighteen-nineteen school year.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point three, upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, be resolved that Jennifer Pinkris, Brian Feduk, Jeremy Bean, be approved to be paid for supa training on six twenty... six-twenty-four eighteen through six-twenty-nine eighteen at a rate of forty-one dollars per hour work, and it says not to exceed thirty-five hours.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. So I will ask, it says not to exceed thirty-five hours, since this is past tense, how many hours did it go?
It was thirty-five.
It was thirty-five hours? And we're going to ensure that these things are not, uh, postated in the future, correct? Thank you. Any further discussion? Raymond?
I didn't look at the, uh, uh, day, six-twenty-four, what day is that?
I believe it's a Monday.
So they're going to be training Monday through Friday?
That's right.
They already trained.
They already trained.
Twenty-fourth was a Sunday.
So it was a training up in Syracuse.
Oh, okay, so this was done this, this is summer?
This was done last June, yes.
Last June.
After school was out.
After school was out, thank you very much.
They traveled on Sunday. It's a conference. I have to go back and check. I mean, we, we went through the days, we checked the, what we did is we looked at the agenda, whenever their time was at the agenda, they got paid for it. They weren't paid on a day, they were not paid for any hours, they were not in a class.
We checked the Sunday to twenty-fourth, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries. Six point four, stipulation of agreement, upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, be resolved that the stipulation agreement between the Ellenville Central School District and the ETS RPA SRP unit be approved as attached.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. John?
Have we resolved this moving forward?
We resolved this, um, we're still having discussions about whether the position will be a twelve-month or not. Those discussions are still happening.
All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries unanimous. Under seven point one, budget?
Motion move seven point one and seven point two.
Second. We have a motion move seven one, seven two, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries unanimous. Eight point one, approval of item...
Motion to move eight point one and eight point two.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries unanimous. We already did the seeker.
Nine one, yeah.
We will move on to nine two. Suburban restoration, Vince, that's the one we walked in, right?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, we'll read it and then ask you. Resolve that the invoice AA-oh-three payment for asbestos contractor in the amount of fifty-four thousand five hundred ninety-nine sixteen cents be approved for suburban restoration.
So moved.
Second.
Move the seconded discussion? Snapp, will you care to expand on this?
Uh, it's the payment for the asbestos contractor for the capital project. Oh, yeah, so the, the reason why it didn't go on originally last week was that, um, it's, it got stuck on a desk of our, of our architect, and I just got the copy of it today, and I wanted to get them paid, because they had been very good to us.
Willie wanted to ask that, so I just...
Okay.
All those in favor?
Can I have...
Oh, sorry.
So, we've had discussions before about invoices being stuck on the architect's desks. Can you please have the conversation with them again?
I had it.
These people have done work for us, and, um, you know, it's Ellenville School, and it's our name, and we don't need to look bad because it's stuck on the architect's desk.
I would, I agree with you one hundred percent, and I had that conversation with both the construction manager today, and I had, um, I asked them to lean a little bit heavier on the architect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion carries unanimous. Ten point one, donation, I'm going to ask for a motion to table this until the October ninth meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to table. Any discussion?
Is that because they, they're not here?
They're not here, to explain. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one. Motion tabled. Ten point two, resolve that the Ellenville Central School District Board of Education approves the contract of Ashley Knox, president of Go Beyond Greatness Incorporated, to provide college and career readiness workshops for students at Ellenville High School for the period of October first, two thousand eighteen through December fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, at a total cost of eleven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, to be paid according to a three-part fee schedule, and that all costs are to be paid through the Family and Community Engagement Program and My Brothers Keeper's Grant for the eighteen-nineteen fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Raymond?
Um, how does this affect our staff providing college and career readiness workshops for our seniors?
This is, this is a supplemental program, it's not a program that's going to sup, you know, supplant. In other words, this is an additional, um, additional activities and conversations that are going to happen with our, our students.
Is, is our staff going to be involved in this workshop?
They, they surely can be, um, but I know that, um, it's, uh, the Go Beyond Greatness representative and representatives that will be, um, mainly involved. This, uh, this program is happening in Kingston right now, in the Kingston High Schools, and, um, it's been very well received, and, um, the discussion goes a little bit deeper about career choice, and, um, I can have, uh, Mr. Mulhern and Ashley, Ashley Knox come and speak to the board about the types of activities that they'll be dealing, if the board would like.
Will our counselors at least get an outline what they're going to do?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Jody?
How are we going to notify our staff and, um, parents when these workshops are going to be taking place? And can we make sure our staff talks this up with our students to make sure that they're aware how important this is, and how this can only benefit them if they attend?
Yes, we'll make, we'll make sure that there's a, a good PR campaign and communication.
Robo-call.
Yep.
TV.
Any further discussion? If not, oh...
No, I would, I, I would like to know, um, are we expecting that the My Brothers Keeper Grant will, will get regular updates on what they're doing?
I can give you...
Because I'm also really interested in knowing what this is, and how it impacts in the building, and so, so maybe after the fact, they can come and just let us know, because it seems to be, it's intended to be a very positive, helpful thing to do, and I, I want to hear about that.
I'll have Mr. Mulhern come do a presentation to the board about the activities of the MBK Grant.
That would be great.
And we also are looking at building in some sustainability for when the, you know, there's a lot of good activities that have happened, um, that we want to continue to happen, um, so we are talking about sustainability with this.
Any further discussion? Lisa?[1657.71]